...regular meeting, the Village Board to order, please rise to your place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vocal call, please.
Farquhar?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Sworn?
Here.
Cranzler?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Motion will be in order to select a chairman pro temp.
I would make that motion to senior trustee Dave Stockton. Chairman, please.
Vocal call.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Sworn?
Yes.
Cranzler?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Okay, before we get started, I want to say something here. I just want to let everybody know that Dan, or Mayor Tobo's, still in the hospital. He's in hospital with pneumonia. So, we are also making his prayers and best wishes for him to return as soon as he possibly can. Okay, next item on the agenda is the public hearing regarding the 2015-2014 appropriate ordinance. I have a motion to open the public hearing meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Vocal call, please.
Gray?
Yes.
Sworn?
Yes.
Cranzler?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I would defer to Dave Shutter from Firm of Elective and Associates to present the appropriation.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd just like to summarize some of the higher level points on this and then we can certainly open it up for, sorry, for further discussion. This process is the culmination of a month or so of work with the administrator department heads, going through line item expenditures, our support on the revenue projection, of course, to determine what funding sources are available to the village for the year. Like in prior years, I believe this budget is very conservative. The revenues, I think, are, if anything, understated. The expenditures are overstated. I believe the actual results will be favorable to what's projected tonight. And I'd just like to go over, on a summary level, what each of the funds look like. The first fund is the general fund, or the corporate fund. That's the primary operating fund of the village. The budgeted revenues are about 3.2 million. The expenses are about 4 million, which would leave a deficit of about 800,000. Again, I believe that's a conservative number, and I believe it has some capital expenditures in there, particularly the police station repairs of about 500,000. Even if this deficit does come to fruition, the village has sufficient reserves to absorb it. The projected reserves at the end of the period would still be $2 million, or about 50 percent of your expenditures. The special revenue funds, which consist of the road and bridge fund, water-fuel tax, as the liability insurance, and the IMRF, those would have budgeted revenues of about 2.4 million and expenses of about 2.8 million. That leaves a deficit of about, just under $500,000, and again, due to a lot of capital expenditures in the village. At the end of the period, you'd still have reserves of well over 800,000 in that fund, which would be about 30 percent of the expenses. The enterprise funds are the garbage fund and the water and sewer fund. You'd have budgeted revenues of 1,400,000 and expenditures of about 1,900,000. At the end, you would still have reserves of about 8 percent of expenditures in that fund. Lastly, you have the bond and interest fund and the pension fund. Those two are showing significant reserves at the end of the year as well. At this point, I'd like to open it up for more detail.
Does anybody from the public have any comments, questions, concerns? If you do, step up to the microphone.
David Elston, 5326 West Main Street, Moni. Two questions are things I don't see in the budget, I just want to clarify or have clarified. Number one, the village employees that are using personal vehicles for village business, how will that be expended? And where will that show up on the budget for the next year? I believe you have, for example, the mayor has a vehicle currently that he will, I understand, will not be used, and there was another vehicle that was turned in, so there's a possibility that personal vehicles may be used. And mileage, I believe, at the government level now is 50 cents a mile.
I have a general reply to that. During the budget process of committee meetings and so forth, there was not a request for an additional line item. Should those expenses come to fruition, we do have a miscellaneous line item that appears on this budget, this appropriation, and in the future, if those are continued expectations of expenses, we would then program that in as a separate line item for expense.
Do you know, Mr. Walters, how many miles were put on those two vehicles this year?
I have no idea. Sorry.
Rough idea?
None. I have mileage, mileage, I don't. The vehicle that I use, we could calculate it backwards, probably, by the amount of fuel consumed, you know, which, which wasn't that much, actually, but, yeah.
Well, just again, at 50 cents a mile, 20,000 miles becomes $10,000. So, just something to be mindful of in improving the budget. There's nothing in here that I see that is planned for, or budgeted for next year for personal use of vehicles. And it raises the question, will somebody be using a personal vehicle and getting gas back here at the tank instead, which would be a serious concern from the public, I think, if you do that. Second question is, one of the issues that came up during the recent election was Parks and Recreation. A number of candidates, including the slate that won, so I'll direct this question toward those people that are here tonight, indicated they wanted to spend more time and money in Parks and Recreation. Is there any additional money in this budget for next year for Parks and Recreation? And if so, where, and what's the plan?
Sorry. When we were going through the budget, that was discussed, and it was brought up that there would be some consideration for that. Sorry, yeah. But the specific, how do I flip to that page here?
That's the same question I had, I looked for, I couldn't find it.
On page four. There's currently, currently on here on page four, this is quarter expenses, $2,000 for events, $2,000 for B and N area. There's other, it would be available for that, as to what it's all we're told.
So, there's $2,000 for Parks and Recreation for next year?
There's $2,000 under events, and then $2,000 under program expenses.
Okay.
So, there's two different areas under parks.
$4,000.
If I may add to that, it will come up later tonight. At this point, the Parks and Recreation is focusing on getting our parks back up and running, as far as our kids not going in and standing in the mud. And again, I talked to Super, kind of, as all about this, and will come up later. We will be revamping these parks, hopefully all three of them, this summer, to look like Fireman's Park.
Is there money in the budget trustee bracket?
Yes, there is.
Where is that at, what line number?
That would be under building and grounds line item. If you give me one moment, I can find it for you, that's on page three. And there is a park, B and G Maintenance, it's called. And there's $45,000 allocated for that type of work.
So, that $45,000 is intended for Parks and Recreation, for the parks themselves?
It is correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you, that's all I have. Anybody else?
Hi, Kansas County, 5154 Park Lane. My overall question is, with your excesses and reserves and everything, basically, the village is in pretty good financial state right now, right?
Correct.
That's all I want to know. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
If I might, an explanation to the public, you heard some deficits in certain funds and so forth, and the appropriation ordinance is just that, it is the appropriation to spend those funds. It doesn't mean that you have to spend those funds. So, there's a difference of, if you, if you don't appropriate the funds, it's very difficult to spend those without coming back and reformulating the budget. But if you open, if you make those appropriations now, and you do not fulfill those appropriations by spending that amount of money, then there's no harm, no foul in that. The same approach was taken last year, and the village ended up in the black and, you know, did not overspend, as each expenditure passes through this board at every board meeting, so they keep a close eye on the expenses as they take place as well. This is a snapshot for the over, the entire year. So, as you can understand, sometimes, you know, it's going to be difficult to get every expense exact on, looking 12 months into the future for fiscal year 14. But, so, therefore, we hit these appropriations, and then the board watches the expenditures on a board meeting by board meeting basis. So, if there's any further questions with that, I'm happy to answer those. And again, we have Dave Shutter here from our auditing firm, so.
Anybody else from the public? Okay, at this time, I make a motion, we close the public portion of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Vocal call, please.
Sworn?
Yes.
Cranzler?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray? Yes.
Okay. Next item is open to the public, the general items only, please limit your time to three minutes. You must come to the podium and give your name and address. Okay, next item is consent agenda. Need a motion on the floor to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Vocal call, please.
Cranzler?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes. Sworn?
Next item is communications from the clerk's office.
I have no idea.
Okay, next item is administration, administrators report, Mr. Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of items. One item listed is the discussion of liability, property, casualty, workers' comp insurance for fiscal year 2014. For that discussion, I have brought forth, asked Mike Alicia to attend, and Mr. Alicia is the vice president, senior vice president with Mesaro Financial Group.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to go over the insurance renewal with you, I know it's everybody's least favorite subject, and originally, we presented the renewal about a month ago at the Southwest Agency for Risk Management Board meeting. And right prior to that presentation, my colleague Ann Carroll and I noticed that there was something wrong with the data. So, what we had to do was go through each and every claim that Swarm has had since about 2005, go through it, make sure it's all right. So, when we presented the renewal back in March, we were, we were presenting a 12 percent increase for the Village of Moni. So, the insurance would go from 184,091 to 206,234, which would be 12 percent. Well, yesterday, I got the revised numbers from, and I have some very good news for Moni. That number is dropping down. So, Moni's insurance last year, again, was 184,910. It's going to be 186,582. And for municipal insurance renewals, that's excellent. Typically, we're seeing in the marketplace right now between 10 and 15 percent. A lot of that has to do with the economy. Typically, insurance carriers make 8 to 10 percent off of investment income, which nobody's making right now. When they make that 8 to 10 percent, they hedge it against the losses that, that have occurred. So, the market's getting, right, really tight right now. Workers' compensation market in Illinois is probably getting worse as it's going on. Workers' compensation, the, Illinois is probably one of the three worst workers' compensation states, and we don't see any light at the end of the tunnel right now. Also, you had a couple of claims. Why is that number up at 186? You had a number of workers' compensation claims and law enforcement claims that are directly affecting your numbers. Workers' compensation is mainly driving that. For every dollar that you pay in premium, the carrier is paying $2.45 out. So, they're basically losing money on that. We do have a loss control program in place to try to prevent losses, but this is why we have insurance, because of these. These are not funny type of losses, they are legitimate injuries. Any questions?
Any questions?
So, this, this invoice that we received is going through, why does it go through Dan Hawtry's office? Is he your carrier here?
No, Dan Hawtry, the Village of Moni is part of a risk managing purchasing group called Southwest Agency for Risk Managers. There are nine members. Dan Hawtry is the treasurer of Swarm. He happens to be a certified public accountant as well.
And one other question. You submit these bills to us, invoices to us, on a yearly basis, is that correct?
Correct. The, the process is, is we take the invoices that we, we're the insurance broker. So, the invoices that the carrier, the insurance carrier bills us, we in turn bill Swarm, which would be Dan Hawtry. Dan Hawtry then breaks out the bills per your allocation.
So, that number that you quoted for this year, 186, that, I don't see that on here. I see, that's not the total.
Yeah, but the bills that you're probably looking at right now are incorrect. It was sent out a few weeks ago, that those were incorrect, and I literally just got the correct data yesterday.
Say that number one more time, 186?
186.
582?
582.
I like that one much better.
Yes, that's a lot nicer.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, additionally, for everyone's information, this is, this amount is funded through the insurance liability fund. That insurance liability fund is an actual levy on our, on our taxes that we passed back in December. So, that's, that's how this bill gets, gets funded, virtually, so.
Do you have any taxes connected?
No, this was for information only. We will get, we'll invoice, that invoice will come through the normal billing process of the village once it's received.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Sure. Thank you, my dear. Mr. Chairman, next on my list is a, for informational purposes only, if you will. We're going to be placing on, we know that, that our community and surrounding communities have had, have had heavy rainfall, and there is some, there has been some, some damage received, both by the village and by individual residents as well. And we will be posting on our, although the area has been declared by the governor as a disaster area, it has not been federally declared. And at this point, there are no federal funds from FEMA available, but in preparation or anticipation that that may be coming down the pipeline, there are some things that residents can do to protect themselves and prepare for this. And number one would be to please document everything that you do, and if you throw things out, you take pictures, contact your insurance agent, do everything that you can do for documentation purposes. The next item is that there will be a, and I don't see it in here, Dave, if you happen to have that, but we will be posting on our marquee, and you can get it available here at the village. The, there's a website in Will County that you can go to, to log your personal information and loss on there, and what that does is it helps Will County get together a tally to be looked at as FEMA approaches Illinois and takes a look at, at some of the flooding issues. So, at this point, again, there aren't any funds available to help, help offset any of that damage, but they're very well may be in the near future. And the website in question there that you should go to is www.willcountyema.org. And there should be some steps to follow on there, some form to fill out, and just be as, as precise as you can. Sometimes you have to be a little generic, that's fine. But Will County Emergency Management Agency is working to get an overall picture of what has taken place in Will County, so that they're ready, should a federal declaration come down the pipeline. I believe that wraps up my reports, sir. I'm sorry, and if we could, the sooner, the better. Monday, they're calling for Monday for a deadline. It may be extended, but I wouldn't count on that, so if we can do that over the weekend or the rest of this week, that would be very beneficial. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next item is mayor's agenda, nothing. The chair's report?
No report at this time, sir.
Next item is attorney's report, Mr. Shuster.
Thank you, Your Honor, I have three items for the board's consideration. The first item is the ordinance for the appropriations for fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2013, ending April 30th, 2014. Obviously, we have a public hearing tonight, receiving their input. The ordinance was duly, the public hearing was duly published. If the board passes the ordinance tonight, we will then have to file it to the county clerk, but it's up for the board's review and consideration. We didn't meet all the guidelines, as Mr. Shutter and Mr. Walters have done, by preparing the notice and also available the ordinance for inspection.
Order's number, please. I make a motion that we accept the ordinance 1638.
So moved.
Give me a second, I'll read the question.
Oh, second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Vocal call, please.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Sworn?
Yes.
Cranzler?
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. The second item is the ordinance approving salaries for fiscal year 2013, 2014. There should be one change in there at all. Salaries for Mr. Lussi and Mr. Twitty, I believe Patrol Officer Lussi and Patrol Officer Twitty, is $16 an hour versus $14 an hour. But everyone else's job is to expect that their salary is set forth in account for the board's consideration.
Order's number?
Six. Four.
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion, we accept the ordinance 1639, with the two changes to the police officers' salary from 1404 per hour to $16 per hour.
A second hit.
Any discussion? Vocal call, please.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Sworn?
Yes.
Stockton?
Thank you, Your Honor. The last item, I know the board gave me directive, but the last meeting to prepare developments in between ourselves, the Village of Moni, and Culvers. I need to have a little more work to be done on this. There has been some changes pertaining to how it's supposed to be set up from a state standpoint, therefore, I ask the board to table this for further consideration.
Mr. Chairman, this meeting. Prior to tabling, council, is, would it be appropriate for, to have any discussion on it at all? We do have a representative of KJP Properties here.
Yes.
Katie Smith, Katie, if you don't mind stepping to the podium, gives the opportunity for any of the trustees to ask any questions, and she was attempting to attend our last meeting, but due to circumstances, just couldn't get here, so.
Katie Smith, 23180 Volweck Road.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you just briefly describe, you know, the money situation, what you're looking for from the village, just over you, the official recognition?
Well, I'll do my best, I'll ask Eric from the county to help me out, if I'm not specific enough. My understanding of this is for stormwater purposes, we're looking at going way over budget in order to be compliant with the requirements for stormwater. And so, what we're looking to do is to ask for assistance from the village at this time to help with this stormwater project, and in return, we will donate the property at the front of our location back to the village, that I understand the county has the intention of purchasing, that would then reimburse the village for their assistance to us.
Any trustees have questions? I'd like, I'd like the administrator, if you would, to explain the other options we're looking at.
Sure. Generally, in a nutshell, that discussion is correct. I have been working with the county highway department in an effort to get this resolved, and thus far, have met with negative results. However, through the assistance of trustee Farquhar, we've been able to contact our county board member, and actually, there's a meeting scheduled for tomorrow that will allow us to better show and explain the situation that exists there, that number one, this property is the last developable property, it is substandard in size, and therefore is not required to have stormwater detention by the Will County Stormwater Management Ordinance. However, through the Will County Highway Department, they are requiring a release rate of stormwater no greater than exists now. When you improve property, you are going to increase the stormwater runoff. What we are asking, and have asked by way of letter to the county highway department, is not to let the stormwater runoff as it may, it's simply to harness that stormwater, and, and we've asked for an increase in the release rate of that stormwater by marginal factor that immediately discharges into a Will County storm sewer, goes under Moni Manhattan Road to the north, probably around 50 or 60 feet, and then daylights. So, there is no downstream effect to anyone who is, who is on the stormwater management system. There is, you know, no, no downside effect, other than, if there would be one, it would be the Culvers itself. So there is no downstream effect to anyone who is on the stormwater management system. There is, you know, no downside effect other than if there would be one, it would be the Culvers itself. The Culvers project is, as I said, they're looking to reduce the stormwater holding requirement from 6,000 cubic feet to 2,500 cubic feet. That's a lot when it translates to underground storage. So that's what we're hoping to resolve tomorrow. We have a meeting scheduled, as I stated earlier, and I believe that there is an opportunity to turn this into a win-win for everyone. That would be an increased release rate for the project. It would be that Will County immediately gets their right-of-way that they're going to require at some point in the future, and the village would get a nice new project and would save taxpayer dollars by not having to invest in that at this point. Trustee, if that sums it up, that's our explanation, so.
Anybody else? Sure.
How much land would be donated to the village?
It's my understanding the front 25 feet of property.
What's the width of the lot?
No, I can't remember the width of the lot there.
It's more than 100 feet.
Oh, yeah, it is, yeah.
Do we have a value for that piece of property?
We do, based on the, at the last meeting.
That says, I knocked out the entire lot, but the part that we go to.
Yes, sir. Based on the, or at the last meeting, I did provide, and I'm sorry to bring it with me, but I did provide a spreadsheet that based on the purchase price of the property and the square footage that was being anticipated to be donated to the village, I was able to apply that square foot, cost per square foot ratio onto that. I just can't remember what that was. I can tell you, it was not $40,000. I can tell you that, but that's the best I can say at this point. Leave it to council to have something. Yeah, I'm sorry, Attorney Gretchowski, but I, my spreadsheet isn't attached, so, sorry. Still don't have those answers, I'm sorry.
Anybody else? Thank you. So we still look at the table, it's just a little mixed, just sort of cities back up on the agenda?
That's the attorney's request, yes.
Okay. I need a motion on the floor to table this Culvers Development Agreement until 5/8/13.
I'll make that motion, second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, please.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Form?
Yes.
Cranser?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Form?
Yes.
Cranser?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Form?
Yes.
Cranser?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Form?
Yes.
Cranser?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
May I just make a comment about that, for the public's, the gentleman that left, left because he wanted to be closer to home, to his family, and had another job equal to the one he had here, so it makes sense. So any reason, can we have one we just hired, just as qualified, so.
We're good. Okay, if there's anything else, I think, no?
I'm sorry, I think you'll need one other motion, Mr. Chairman, regarding authorizing the village administrator to analyze and develop regarding personnel matter and consult with our labor attorney regarding the same.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, please.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Form?
Yes.
Cranser?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Form?
Yes.
Cranser?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
May I just make a comment about that, for the public's, the gentleman that left, left because he wanted to be closer to home, to his family, and had another job equal to the one he had here, so it makes sense. So any reason, can we have one we just hired, just as qualified, so.
We're good. Okay, if there's anything else, I think, no?
I'm sorry, I think you'll need one other motion, Mr. Chairman, regarding authorizing the village administrator to analyze and develop regarding personnel matter and consult with our labor attorney regarding the same.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, please.
Cranser?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
May I just make a comment about that, for the public's, the gentleman that left, left because he wanted to be closer to home, to his family, and had another job equal to the one he had here, so it makes sense. So any reason, can we have one we just hired, just as qualified, so.
We're good. Okay, if there's anything else, I think, no?
I'm sorry, I think you'll need one other motion, Mr. Chairman, regarding authorizing the village administrator to analyze and develop regarding personnel matter and consult with our labor attorney regarding the same.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, please.
Cranser?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Form?
Yes.
Cranser?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to, I need a motion on the floor to hire Justin Fleck as a new mechanic for the village to replace the mechanic that resigned a couple of weeks ago. His hourly rate is 2544 per hour. I would make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, please.
Form?
Yes.
Cranser?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
May I just make a comment about that, for the public's, the gentleman that left, left because he wanted to be closer to home, to his family, and had another job equal to the one he had here, so it makes sense. So any reason, can we have one we just hired, just as qualified, so.
We're good. Okay, if there's anything else, I think, no?
I'm sorry, I think you'll need one other motion, Mr. Chairman, regarding authorizing the village administrator to analyze and develop regarding personnel matter and consult with our labor attorney regarding the same.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, please.
Cranser?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Form?
Yes.
Anybody else, Swells?
All I have, sir.
At this time, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm moved.
Second. Go ahead, please.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Form?
Yes.
Cranser?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
We're done.
Danny?
I'm dedicating that library to me. I don't know if it was for the water.